I call the Committee on Finance Administration to order. You will take up the following items for approval. Action item one A with the approval of the minutes of the March 18, 2024 meeting. I move the approval of action item one A. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? This matter is approved. Now, action item one B. The policy calendar. Policy item one B one. A resolution to authorize a waiver of application fees for seniors graduating from New York City and New York State high schools. Last October during CUNY month, the university piloted an expanded application fee waiver program to promote fall 2024 applications to the university by students graduating from both New York City and New York State high schools. The pilot resulted in a 386% increase in applications compared to the same period of the prior year. The university wishes to waive student application fees once again for fall 2024 application cycle as part of CUNY month. The university is requesting that the board trustees approve the waiver application for the following students: The New York City Public Schools seniors graduating in 2025 who apply to the university between October 21, 2024 and November 15, 2024. And high school seniors from schools in New York State but outside of New York City who apply to the university between November 4, 2024 and November 15, 2024. Interim University Executive Director of Admissions Sharon Hardy is available to provide further background on this item or to answer any questions. I move the approval of item, policy item one B one. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion, any questions? You know, because of the FAFSA mix, except it's a little hard to tell, I gather, how successful this has been this year because the enrollments, the enrollment deadline has moved.
It's too early certainly for the, for the one that we did last year. But if you'll remember, or the one we did this fall for this coming year. But if you remember, we also did one last spring, right? For, for coming in. And there we had a 13 higher, 13 percentage point higher yield rate where there was a waived application. So that gives you some, certainly it's hard to show causal effect, but gives you some sense of the, the impact.
And I'll just, as things go along, please keep us posted on, on, on what the rate is.
Absolutely.
If there's any way to figure out how many apply early who might have applied later.
Yes.
I know it's complicated and whatever, but it's a great program. And yes, you know, for our students, we should be doing more of this as we can. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none. Proceed to a vote. All those in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none. This matter is approved. Policy item one B two is a resolution to authorize the university's colleges to enter into agreements with private and parochial secondary school students for college now programs. The university's existing college now program, the largest dual-enroll program in the United States, has successfully established a strong foundation for partnership and student success within the New York City Public School System. The university's goal is to, is to expand this program to private and parochial school students in New York City, which will help reinforce community relationships and enrollment pipelines when the university is implementing a multifaceted enrollment strategy to recover from post-pandemic enrollment declines. Accordingly, the university requests that the board authorize its colleges to enter into agreements with private and parochial schools in New York City to allow CUNY faculty to teach select college-level courses to their secondary school students. The university also requests that the board of trustees allow the tuition rate charged for these classes to be a minimum of $150 per credit and that all mandatory fees are waived. The agreements will be, will be memorialized using a memorandum of understanding developed by the university's Office of General Counsel. University Assistant Dean of K-16 Initiatives, Martin Fort, is available to provide further background on this item or to answer any questions as needed. I move the approval of item, policy item one B two. Do I have a second? Thank you. Any discussion or any questions? We had a presentation on this in Academic Affairs and it's, you know, it's an exciting program. And it has an immediate impact on graduation rates. And you know, just expanding, it makes a lot of sense. So it's, anybody have anything else to say? Hearing none, we'll proceed to a vote. All those in favor of this item, please indicate. Got a couple. Any opposed? Any abstentions? This matter is approved. Policy item one B three is a, as a resolution to authorize academic excellence fees for the Master of Science Speech Language Pathology Program at Hunter College. Hunter College's School of Health Professions offers a Master of Science in Speech Language Pathology that allows students to apply for New York State Lysenship, New York State Teacher Certification, and National Certification. This program is accredited by the Council of Academic Accreditation of the American Speech Language Hearing Association and is nationally recognized for its outstanding quality and subactivity. It is viewed as a pioneer in the field in New York area and is a highly competitive program in which to gain admissions. After complying with the requirements in the university's Academic Excellence Fee Policy, Hunter College requests that the board approve an academic excellence fee of $500 per semester that will be used to strengthen the academic curriculum and services to students in the program, better prepare graduates for clinical practice, be research leaders, and maintain accreditation standards. The new fee will be effective for students entering the program
Board of Trustees. Beginning in the fall of 2024.
Will you please remove him?
Students have five demands for you. Demand number one. Divest, immediately divest from all companies
The new fee will be effective for students entering the program beginning in the fall of 2024.
Including weapons, tech, and surveillance, and construction companies.
Hunter College Academy's Provost and Vice President of Academic Accreditation.
Regarding CUNY's institutional investments.
Manoish.
Demand number two. Boycott. Demand all academic trips to the Zionist state encompassing birthright, gold right, and perspective trips. Cancel all ones of cooperation with Israeli academic institutions, including events, activities, agreements, and research collaborations.
Demand number three, solidarity. Release a statement of pardon of rights of Palestinian people to have a liberation and the right of return. Protect CUNY students and workers who are attacked for seeking out against the genocide in Gaza and in solidarity with Palestinian liberation.
Manoish, are you here?
Freeing professors who have been fired for showing solidarity with Palestinians.
Demand number four, demilitarize. Demilitarize CUNY, demilitarize Harlem. Get IOF and NYPD officers of all CUNY campuses and on all collaboration trainees and recruits
It's a little noisy, but.
Including the CIA, Homeland Security, and ROTC.
Okay. I move the approval of policy item one B three. Do I have a second? Thank you.
Rename the Collin Palace School of Global and Civic Leadership.
Provost, can you tell us specifically what the academic excellency fee is used for that isn't covered by the normal tuition?
Yes, so the academic excellence fees are going to cover three areas. One is specialized software to do clinical training through simulation. Because you don't get all these fees just in the field. You need to get some in advance to prepare them for their clinical.
We will not stop, we will not rest, boycott! Divest! We will not stop, we will not rest, boycott! Divest! We will not stop, we will not rest, boycott! Divest! We will not stop, we will not rest, boycott! Divest! We will not stop, we will not rest, boycott! Divest! We will not stop, we will not rest, boycott! Divest! We will not stop, we will not rest, boycott! Divest! We will not stop, we will not rest, boycott!
Thank you. Thank you, let's continue.
Excellent. The second is to give students access to certain reading resources that are not currently available for clinical education. So we, we would subscribe to certain websites as well as software, software for the clinical training, websites and resources for reading materials and training materials for those who are studying to be speech language pathologists. And then the third aspect is the training of the clinical instructors in the field that supervise the clinical rotations for the students.
Any, any other questions or any discussion on this? Thank you. Hearing none, we'll proceed to a vote. All those in favor, please so indicate. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, this matter is approved. Policy item one B four is a resolution to authorize an academic excellence fee for the Doctor of Education Program in Organizational Leadership Development and Change at Lehman College. Lehman College's Doctor of Education in Organizational Leadership Development and Change Program is divine, is designed for graduates to lead mission-driven organizations that serve the community in a complex and constantly shifting environment, although its emphasis on research, collaboration, social justice, and applied practice. After complying with the requirements in the university's Academic Excellence Fee Policy, Lehman College is seeking the board's approval for an academic excellence fee of $350 for the fall and spring semesters and $300 for the summer semester. The fee will fund various activities such as workshops, intensive advisement, leadership assessments, enhanced mentoring, digital learning, research support, and other events and resources that support advanced graduate study. The fee will be applicable beginning in the fall 19, 2024 semester. Lehman College President Fernando Delgado is available to provide further background on other items or answer any questions as needed. I move the approval of policy item one B four. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, this is pretty much laid out, I think. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. I didn't do something.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? This matter is approved. Policy item one B five is a resolution to authorize a new enterprise license application for IBM SPSS statistical software for social sciences, which has been widely, widely used by university faculty and students since being licensed as an enterprise academic software offering in 2009. The university seeks approval to enter into a three-year university-wide contract for IBM SPSS statistical software utilizing the New York State Office of General Services Contract, PM 20890, beginning on July 31, 2024, and ending on July 30, 2025, in an amount not to exceed $1,693,889.1. I move approval of policy item one B five. Do I have a second? Any discussion, questions?
Is there a person who?
Yes.
Go ahead.
No, you can go.
Okay, you go.
Who do we post the questions to?
Seb's here.
Or Vivek, actually. Vivek, want to come to us?
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed that line.
In various programs at various campuses, there's been student concern about, and faculty concern about SPSS. Because when the student graduates, this is, you know, they either have to go to work in a place that's got this kind of money to pay for SPSS. For else, and it's, it's an extremely expensive package. And the students have encouraged programs to offer open systems for statistical packages as opposed to training them to rely on a package which then is going to be impossible for them to afford unless they happen to get the ideal job in the ideal organization. And so I'm, I'm reluctant, just as a, I may, I don't want to screw up something that everybody's planning to do. But I, I am thinking of abstaining in, in, in respect to the students that I've taught that, that have been very frustrated about expensive software that campuses buy and then teach and then the student can't get access to it later and has never been taught to use a statistical package that would be available for their lifetime for free.
Just to give you an overview, I'll add the purpose of the software is not, how do I say? Open source is a good idea. I, I agree with you. You know, because those are tools that are available. But there are certain classes that are using these statistical tools like SPSS to do regression analysis or to do analysis that are built into the class itself, the curriculum itself, which is not to say that justifies the reason for it. But for us to make sure that there is a continuity in terms of the classes that are getting offered right now that are using this tool, they don't lose the, you know, current license, so continue all classes as scheduled. Every semester, we have, just to give you an idea, about 5,000 classes that are using this tool and about 82, 70,000 to 80,000 students who are using these on those classes. Doesn't mean that it's going to be available when they leave, but as long as they have the CUNY life, students, staff, faculty, they are able to access it. There are competing software, open source, like PSSS, I think it's called, which doesn't have all the functionalities that this tool has. So to learn completely what the analytics will be, they need the tool. Now, it will not be available in certain companies that they go to. That is a fact, which is true of many software that we have procured.
Well, I think you made my case. But I mean, that, that, that we're, we're doing something bad and we're doing it extensively. But, but I, I accept that, you know, it's being used and we might just as well provide it. But this is, I don't think this is the best strategy for our students.
If we use an alternative program to do this, would the results be any different upon graduation? I mean, you know, once they learn on one program, what happens when they graduate and, you know, their employer doesn't use the program? They, the alternative program they learned at, at CUNY?
Let me just say that, that you said that we're doing something bad and prove that. Let you show that there's no agreement with your assessment we're doing something bad, that we're giving state of the art.
I apologize for.
And as, as a former SPSS trained historian, let me just say that you, we want to give our students the best tools that, that they can possibly have. And then the market will take care of the, the other parts of the things afterwards.
Oh, yeah. Mr. Emmer.
CUNY has historically utilized IBM SPSS as a critical academic resource enhancing our capabilities in data analysis across various disciplines. This longstanding partnership highlights our commitment to providing sophisticated educational tools. However, it is essential that our collaborations reflect the highest ethical standards and values, particularly regarding human rights. IBM's involvement with the Israeli Defense Forces includes a provision of technology that supports military operations. Notably, IBM has supplied advanced command and control systems that play a crucial role in the logistics and execution of military activities in the genocide in Gaza. Such technologies have been utilized in operations that have led to significant humanitarian crises and the killing of over 30,000 innocent men, women, and children. This association raises profound ethical concerns about the indirect implications of our financial engagements. Given these considerations, it is imperative, it is imperative for CUNY to reassess our relationship with IBM. The proposed expenditure of approximately $1.7 million on IBM software licenses should be redirected towards more ethical and more responsible alternatives. Open source software like Jamovi or P S P P could replace IBM software, offering similar functionalities without the associated costs, thus freeing of funds for direct student success initiatives. Opting for alternatives to IBM software would not only demonstrate CUNY's commitment to fiscal prudence, but also reflect our dedication to upholding human rights and ethical integrity in our operations. Therefore, I strongly urge the committee to consider terminating our contract with IBM and to seek ethically responsible software solutions that align with CUNY's educational goals and values. I cannot in good conscience vote yes to this resolution knowing that this $1.7 million could financially benefit a company whose operations in Gaza could contribute to military activities that have led to the loss of thousands of innocent lives.
Thank you.
I'll just say, as a person who's written on open source for 20-plus years with a successful textbook as an alternative to SPSS, I'd say that it is a essential tool for very many faculty and students that it'd be a mistake to take it out of the toolbox that the faculty and students have. Because although there are alternatives that are free, there's a cost to learning them. And that cost is very high for many people.
I second that as a faculty member who, I don't use SPSS. I use Stata. And if this conversation were about Stata, it would be very hard. And I think this is part of retooling and it's part of having our faculty recognize that we do have to look more towards open source and CUNY to fund that sort of training. So, which we are already doing in a limited way.
I, I would hope going forward that we will continue to evaluate and see what other alternatives there are. But, you know, if this is the best tool in the toolbox, you know, I'd be kind of reluctant to give up on it at this point. But if there are other tools that are comparable, we should be looking forward, you know. You know, I do note that the price for this three-year contract is the same as the price for the last three-year contract. Inflation notwithstanding, we, you know, we're doing that. There are always these issues. Yeah. The question is every time I hear this, you know, it's an old student revolutionary. I say, what's the alternative? And, you know, every other company we, we look at has different but equally pressing ethical issues. And, you know, I mean, you know, we've got to make decisions on this. And, you know, for me, the question is, what best promotes the education of the students we're trying to reach?
So talking about education, I know I've been a student of classes that the board, well, CUNY has stopped, like, paying for the license of. And like, I know it has had a negative effect on us as a student. But at the same time, it has been done before. And I, the $1.7 million, like, there's other similar open source platforms with the similar UI that can be used instead, you know. And I don't think that would have necessarily negative effect on students, right? Like, it's a learning curve. There's always going to be a learning curve. But at the same time, I think the $1.7 million can be used for something a lot more student-oriented that affects students directly.
Anything further on this? I would just hope that over the next three years, I'm, I'm going to vote to approve. And if it's approved, I'm hoping over the next three years, if I can, Seb, you can take a look at, at this issue. You're going to have to interact with the faculty as well as the student groups to make sure that in fact, anything else we come up with, you know, there's a workable transition because this is not going to be easy. You know, this is, you know, specialized stuff that I don't begin to understand, so. If there's nothing further, let's proceed to a vote. All those in favor, please indicate by raising a hand. One, two, three. One, two, three, four.
Four.
One, two, three, four. Oh, four, okay. Counting. I'm a lawyer, I'm not, I'm not a count. All, all those opposed? One. Any abstentions? This matter is approved. We don't want to vote against. Policy item one B six. A resolution to authorize contract with Slate Industries, Inc. to provide elevator and escalator maintenance services to the City College of New York. The City College of New York requires preventative and corrective maintenance services for its elevators and escalators to ensure they are adequately operated and must, and must hire an external and qualified contractor to perform such services. The college issued a competitive mini-bid utilizing the New York State Office of General Services Contract, number PS 70078, to procure the required services. Three proposals were received and Slate Industries was the responsive and responsible response, offering the lowest bid price in response to the solicitation. The college is seeking authorization to make expenditures in the amount not to exceed $8,198,784 for a period not to exceed four years. City College Vice President of Finance Administration, Ismail Perez, is available to provide further background on the item and to answer any questions as needed. I move the approval of policy item one B six. Do I have a second? Thank you. Is there any discussions or any questions that we need to proceed with this? Elevators and escalators are an unnecessary evil in our buildings. Hearing none, let's proceed to a vote. All those in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? This matter is approved. Policy item one B seven is a resolution to approve the Personnel Matters Report of the Finance and Administration Committee. The May 2024 Personnel Matters Report is generated from employee data entered into the university's system of record between February 9, 2024, and March 22, 2024, and does not contain appointments that have been submitted as individual resolutions. The report contains 19 ECP actions, including five regular appointments, eight interim appointments or interim extensions, four salary increases, and two separations. Senior Vice Chancellor for University Human Resources and Labor Relations, Dorian Gloria, is available to provide further background on this item or to answer any questions as needed. I move the approval of policy item one B seven. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Any discussion or questions? Seeing none, let's proceed to a vote. All those in favor, please indicate. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none, the matter is approved. Policy item one B eight through one B 13 are resolutions to appoint regular and interim members of the, of the executive compensation plan. Policy item B eight in the central office, Kara Heffernan is interim university dean of student success initiatives. Vice Chancellor of Academic Faculty Affairs, Alicia Alvaro, is available to provide, to provide further background on this item or to answer any questions. Policy item one B nine, Bronx Community College, Raymond Galinsky, dean of institutional effectiveness. Bronx Community interim president, Milton Santiago, is available, available to provide further background on this item or to answer any questions as needed. Policy item B 10, College of Staten Island, Michael Stiper is provost and senior vice president. College of Staten Island President Timothy Lynch is available to provide further background on this item or to answer any questions. Policy B 11, Medgar Evers, the, Medgar Evers College, Ken Hoyle as interim dean of the School of Education. Medgar Evers College President Patricia Ramsey is available to provide further background on this item or to answer any questions as needed. And policy items B 12 and 13 at the New York City College of Technology, Maureen Arterfesta as dean of the School of Professional Studies, and Rita Uden as Vice President of Information Technology and Chief Information Officer. New York City College Technology President Russell Hatzler is available to provide further background on this item or to answer any questions as needed. I move the approval of policy items B three through B 13. Do I have a second? Thank you. Any discussion, any questions for any of these? Interesting resumes, they were worth reading. If there is none, we'll proceed to a vote. All those in favor, please indicate. Thank you. All opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none, these matters are approved. With no more items on the policy calendar, I will address section two for information items. There is one information item. Information item two A is the update on state and city budgets. Senior Vice Chancellor and Chief Financial Officer Sharif Solomon will report on this item. Vice Chancellor.
Thank you very much, Chair. I have a brief presentation for you that goes through the state enacted budget. I'll off the presses. And the announcement of the city's executive budget from last Wednesday. And first, I would like to start just with a big thank you. If the slides go across, but I can say thank you without the slides. First, there needs to be deep gratitude to our state-elected leaders, starting, of course, of Governor Hochul, her team in the chamber, her team in the state division of budget for what I think is a really, really good budget for CUNY. Thank you to state senate majority leader Stuart Cousins for her support and that of her whole conference and of course, the Senate Finance Staff, Assembly Speaker Hasty and the Ways and Means staff, Senate Finance Chair Kruger and her team, Ways and Means Chair Weinstein, higher ed chairs, Stavisky and Fay, and really all members, all members of the legislature that we've had the privilege of engaging with over this budget process to produce again what is a really good budget for CUNY. And of course, I would be remiss if I did not thank the board, of course, for your leadership and your advocacy for getting us to where we got to. And of course, the chancellor's leadership and E V C Batista and the whole chancellery really for producing this budget. I think that there are several positives here. I want to highlight just a few. Number one, on the senior college side, we have seventy six million dollars in additional senior college operating support. It's broken down as follows, thirty six million that was first included in the governor's executive budget and the enacted budget added on top of that forty million dollars in general operating support for senior colleges, which will help the university fund the fiscal twenty four, fiscal twenty five wage increases for the approved and ratified D C thirty seven and classified staff contract. So that was a significant, significant step forward, meeting our strategy, you know, essentially to have those labor costs covered. There's also included what's called an advanced payment of thirty eight million dollars, which is available to us in fiscal year twenty four. That will go towards helping pay for the one-time retroactive pay and one-time signing bonus for that same contract. So that was a significant development as well. And then mandatory needs, fringe benefits, there was an additional sixty nine point five million for that. So that's the senior college picture. On the community college, as you know, community college picture really leads with the one hundred percent of the funding floor, which has been with us for a couple of years now, which is critical for us. If we had to move back on to the low and pace formula, it would mean fifty to sixty million less for the university, for the community colleges. So that was significant, that that was continued. And on top of that, there was an additional five point three million dollars that was appropriated in additional operating aid to the community colleges as well. I would note that this pot of money and also the previous pots for the senior colleges are all subject to a plan that is approved by the New York State Budget Director. And so just wanted to note that. Next, there were a number of additional allocations appropriations for either new or additional college-specific funding and for programs. So first, with the college-specific funding, four million dollars for the School of Medicine, which was certainly a welcome appropriation, and additional two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the School of Labor and Urban Studies, which brings the total allocation for that school to six point two million. And then a number of different programs. Not all of them are listed here. Here, we just want to highlight some of the new appropriations, addition of new funding and or add-ons to existing programs. So again, you know, I don't need to go through all of them, but there was certainly in the summary that was distributed to the board. But you'll see here, for example, in terms of new funding, five hundred thousand dollars for CUNY graduate midwifery program, three hundred and fifty thousand for the Asian American Research Institute, and then some significant additions to other programs. So just highlighting one, for example, six hundred and seventy five thousand dollars for the blackmail initiative, which brings that total significant increase, more than doubling what had been the appropriation for that program, bringing the total to one point one seven five million. So certainly welcome those. I think a lot of the other programs that you are accustomed to seeing, funding was continued, not added. And so again, the exhaustive list you'll see, you'll see in the summary that was circulated. On the capital side, really welcome news as well, an additional four hundred and eighty one million dollars in new capital funding. The governor and her executive budget had four hundred and forty one million. The legislature and the governor added another forty million. And you see that forty million increase in senior college expansion and improvement work. But that is significant and, you know, it's certainly welcome news for our facilities. You've heard about the changes to TAP. The increase in the minimum award from five hundred dollars to a thousand dollars and also the increase in the income threshold, which is certainly welcome and will certainly help a subset of our students. Now moving to the city executive budget, which was released last Wednesday on the twenty fourth. The picture at the community colleges as so far in the executive budget, the baseline pegs are still tracking at ninety four point one million. And that is up from the forty nine point six million at the adopted budget level from last year. So there was forty five million added in terms of pegs between the November plan and the January plan. So they remain. And then the fiscal twenty five executive budget, the peg is at ninety five point four million. And at this point, you also see program funding that was not continued, that was in the fiscal twenty four adopted of roughly about fifty million dollars. Now, that could include programs like ACE and CUNY Reconnect, popular programs. We fully anticipate that the conversation over the next several weeks with the council will produce a restoration of those. I would note that we've been having positive conversations with the administration, with O N B, and also with the council. As the process moves forward, we hope that we could have a favorable outcome both on the operating side and on the capital side. And that is the highlight. Appreciate the time and happy to take any questions.
The first part was the highlights, the second part was the lowlights. Not happy with where the city is at this point, but we have two months now to sort of get them straightened out. If the chancellery and our friends there can continue to do what they did at the state, at the city, hopefully we'll get better results by June thirtieth. Any questions or comments or other thoughts about budget and where we are and what we're doing while we have the vice chancellor here? Seeing none. With no more items on the calendar, I move to which are in this meeting. Do I have a second? Is there any opposition? Seeing none. We are regenerating.